Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming down tonight. We will convene the Baltimore City Council Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee. I'm Carl Stokes, chair of the committee. To my left is Councilman Eric Costello of the 11th District where we happen to be tonight. Thank you, Councilman, for hosting us. This is an evening that we've done from time to time in the Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee, which is to take the hearings. Outside of City Hall and into the communities, we've done them a few times, Locust Point and a couple of other places that I remember putting these committee hearings. To my right is Jennifer Coats. She's staff to the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Angela Gibson from the Mayor's Office is also with us, resplendent in her pink and green this afternoon. And we want to thank our hosts, the University of Baltimore, for allowing us to come in and for setting up and just being great hosts. We thank you very much, Dean, for that. You are the dean or are you the director?
The director.
Great.
The director.
Thank you. And so this is being broadcast live on channel 25, on channel 25, throughout the city of Baltimore. And tonight's hearing is legislative oversight relating to City Council Resolution or Bill 15-0137, which is to brief the committee every 30 days or so on the current status of the city audits. And of course, in so doing, briefing the committee, we're also briefing the public at large through this venue with the live television, which will be rebroadcast several times. And my colleague, Councilman Costello, as he usually does, a great job of getting out an immediate report on what happens. And of course, our great staff, Jennifer Coats, will do a report that we will also put into the file and share at the council's website. Councilman, I'd like you to give any comments you'd like to give at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your leadership on this issue. And thank you, Director Raymond, and the city auditor, Bob McCarty. I appreciate you guys being partners and trying to move this issue along. I think you covered everything, Mr. Chairman. Just want to reiterate the importance of getting information out to the public about what's happening and finding a way to help move this along as expeditiously as possible to make sure these audits are completed by the end of the mayoral term. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Paul Plemon from the President's Office has also joined us this afternoon. Sure, of course. Let me just mention that the council bill, the original ordinance 12-0053, was enacted on August 15, 2012. The ordinance amended the city charter in Article 7, Section 4.5, to require certain executive departments, referred to as principal agency in the city charter, to undergo a quadrennial audit. The audits take place at least once during every four-year term of the mayor and city council. The audit must be of the principal agency's operations during the preceding four years. That would include both financial and performance audits. And the Department of Finance will maintain a list of vendors that have been approved by the Board of Estimates as required by the city charter. The audits are to commence in fiscal year 2014, and the first round of audits are to be done by December of 2016. With us is our Director of the Department of Finance, Mr. Henry Raymond, who will give us an overview of where we are thus far in the process and may speak to other matters this evening. Mr. Raymond, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Councilman Costello. And I'd also like to say good evening to the members of the public.
If I might just interrupt a moment, Councilman Bill Henry of the 4th District, who is a member of the committee, has also joined us.
And, Mr. Chair.
Again, good evening. My name's Henry Raymond. I serve as the Finance Director for the city of Baltimore. So the purpose of my remarks this evening are to provide an update regarding the status of the quadrennial agency audits. As Councilman Stokes indicated, there was a charter amendment approved that requires for the city, for 13 agencies to undergo quadrennial agency audits. The audits comprise two components, a performance audit and a financial audit. My first comment is that audits are routine to the city. The city prepares on an annual base a number of other audits, and we've listed some of them. For example, the city's comprehensive annual financial report, the 911 emergency systems program report, water utility funds statements, wastewater utility fund statements, parking facility fund statements. These are various enterprise funds for the city. So the point is, is the quadrennial agency audits are not the only audits that the city undergoes routinely. The administration and the Department of Finance are committed to completing all of the audits prior to the end of this administration, which will be December 2016. The city has an administrative manual policy that governs the responsibility for ensuring overall compliance with the charter requirements. There are 13 agencies that undergo the quadrennial audit process. They are finance, law, public works, fire department, police department, housing and community development, recreation and parks, transportation, general services, planning, human resources, the Baltimore Development Corporation, and the Mayor's Office of Information Technology. And we'll discuss the status of where we are with these 13 agencies momentarily. So the process for these audits, the charter amendment specifies that agencies have the prerogative to choose either the Department of Audits to conduct the audit or to contract with an external audit firm. The Department of Finance is responsible for the administration of the process and contract management only. What I need to stress very importantly is that the Department of Finance cannot interfere with the timeframes or the requirements established by the audit firms for the conduct of the audits, both the performance and financial. The auditors are independent and are required to do their work freely and in an independent and objective manner. We firmly believe in transparency. When the audit engagements are assigned, they are presented to the Board of Estimates for approval. When the audits are completed, the audits are presented again to the Board of Estimates with copies to the mayor, city council president, and controller. Additionally, the final financial and performance audit reports are posted on the city's quadrennial audits webpage, which is located under the City Finance Department at BaltimoreCity.gov. And additionally, we post quarterly updates regarding the quadrennial audits on the Department of Finance's website. Now, this matrix provides an update of the status of the audits. So there are 13 agencies that are governed by this charter requirement. And from left to right, the first column, which is round, we split the 13 agencies into three groups for the audit. You could consider it like round one, round two, round three. So you'll see that there are a number of agencies in round one, Department of Finance, Public Works, Transportation, Police Department, and Wreck and Parks. The round two agencies, Housing and Community Development, Fire, Department of General Services, and the Mayor's Office of Information Technology. And then finally, the round three agencies, which there are four, which is Planning, Baltimore Development Corporation, the city's Law Department, and the city's Department of Human Resources. Now, as we indicated earlier, each of these agencies must undergo a financial audit as well as a performance audit. And what I'll do is briefly go through the status of where we are by the agencies. For the Department of Finance, round one agency, the financial audit has been completed and was presented to the Board of Estimates. In terms of the performance audit status, there are five performance audits to be performed. One of them is completed for the Bureau of Revenue Collections. Risk management is ongoing, and there are three that will be done. The city's treasury management function, the city's billing and integrity unit. And I'm missing one. Thank you. The purchases function. So those three remain to be done. Department of Public Works, both the financial audit and the performance audit are both in progress. For Department of Transportation, the financial audit is in progress, and the performance audit has been completed and presented to the Board of Estimates. Now, what I can say regarding the completed performance audit for transportation is, as a result of the audit, we established a committee to review issues or items of a citywide nature that need to be addressed. The main item that came up with the Department of Transportation audit is that there was incomplete and insufficient documentation regarding the performance metrics that were assigned. So with this particular audit, there were five different areas that were reviewed, and we were looking, the external auditor was looking for the documentation to support the performance metrics and the trends that were established over time. The major finding with the performance audit for Department of Transportation was that there was a lack of documentation on file to support the metrics that were used. Because we believe that this could be an issue citywide as other performance audits are performed, we've established a committee to put in place a corrective action plan for the retention of documentation moving forward. Moving on, the Baltimore Police Department wrote, "The financial audit and the performance audit are in progress." For Wreck and Parks, the financial audit has a completed draft and is under review. And the same applies for the performance audit. For the round two agencies, Housing and Community Development, Fire, Department of General Services, and the Mayor's Office of Information Technology, all of the audits, both on the performance audit side and the financial audit side, are underway. Now, regarding the round three agencies, originally, the plan was that round one would be completed, round two would start, when round two completed, round three would begin. We're trying to expedite the schedule, so round three agency audits will be performed while round two is still underway. We're not waiting for round two to be completed before we start round three, because what we want to do is ensure that all of the audits are completed prior to the end of the administration. So what we've done with the round three agencies for planning, and we have a draft letter prepared to go to the Board of Estimates before the end of January for both the financial audit and the performance audit. For the Baltimore Development Corporation, again, the same comment. The engagement letter for both financial and performance audit will go to the Board of Estimates for approval prior to the end of January. Same with the Law Department. And I have to make a note regarding the last item, round three for the Department of Human Resources, where it says, "Awaiting Department of Audits acceptance." Again, one of the options for an agency is either Department of Audits performs the engagement or an external audit firm. The Department of Audits determined that they have the capacity to perform the engagement for human resources, and I was not able to update the slide before we submitted it. So on the last line, for human resources, we will receive an engagement letter for the Board of Estimates for both the financial audit and the performance audit from the Department of Audits. And the Department of Audits will perform the engagement for human resources. So now that we have audit firms for the round three agencies, those will commence in February, as soon as Board of Estimates approval is obtained, as I indicated, prior to the month of January concluding. So with these steps taken, we believe that we should be in excellent shape to have all of the audits completed before the end of this administration. Again, the caveat is that we cannot control or dictate the pace at which the audit firms move. They have to do a survey of the environment, develop the audit plan, perform their testing, review all of the data that they receive as a result of the testing. If that requires additional testing, that additional testing has to be performed, and it has to meet the satisfaction of the external auditor before the audits can be completed. So that's pretty much the high-level overview of the quadrennial agency audits. And I'll entertain any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Director Raymond. First question is the committee that's going to be addressing the retention of documentation in the city. Did you say specifically if that's citywide, or is that just the 13 agencies?
Oh, it's specifically for the 13 agencies. But it's for findings that are citywide to those 13 agencies. So for example, let's say, for example, it comes up in the majority of performance audits that there's a lack of documentation to support metrics, whatever those metrics might be. So if we determine that it's an item that's not limited to a specific department, but it's crossing over multiple agencies, then the audit committee will work to create and put in place corrective action plan since we know that it's not limited to a single agency. So for example, if we determine that the issue regarding lack of documentation to support performance metrics, which right now is limited to transportation, if we determine that it's wider and broader than that, then this committee would put in place policies to govern record documentation for these agencies.
And who establishes that committee, the mayor?
Yes.
And who's included on that committee?
It will be made up of officers that represent these agencies. So at a minimum, it'll be the Finance Director, probably the Budget Director, the City Stat Director, as well as representation from the agencies.
So it's not just going to be DOT, because obviously there are...
No, it would be broader. It would probably be at least officers from at least four or five of the agencies so that there's a broad segment, so that there's sufficient input from the agencies as well as the control agencies.
Councilman, I'm sorry. Councilman Warren Branch, also a member of the committee representing the 13th District, has also joined us this evening. Sure.
Will there be anyone, representation from the city auditor's office on that committee? Just to help in terms of the interpretation of, you know, what an audit is and what's trying to be accomplished?
Yeah, I believe the answer to that is no, because the city auditor is performing audits. And I believe it would be a conflict of interest for them to serve on the committee when they may have been the one that did an audit that identified one of those findings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening.
Good evening.
Actually, I'm going to grab onto the end of Councilman Costello's last question first and say, but it wouldn't be a conflict of interest for, say, a member of the council to sit on that committee if the council president and the mayor agreed that that would be a useful addition.
I would think the mayor might take that under advisement.
All right. I would ask so if that would, if that's...
Sure.
Sure, okay. I had three questions, three, well, different kinds of questions. One's a timeline question, and it refers to this chart. Looking at the three different rounds, if you could help me remember, when did round one begin? And by beginning, I would be helpful, I would be happy to say, if we use these status categories of engagement letter pending BOE, at what point was the engagement letter pending for the round one agencies? And it's just roughly, I'm not looking for a specific date, but was that like last August? Was that sooner? Was that further ago?
Probably last, early last fall, March.
Last March, okay. Because, and you can probably guess where I'm just, I'm trying to, there's a term of art for this. I'm trying to find the route by which it could be, by which we could make the compelling case when we're asked by our constituents why we expect that all of these will in fact be done by the end of December, given how long it's taken to do the first round. Could you speak to that? It's just a general...
Yeah, I think generally, as you can see, audits are now beginning to be completed and to be presented to the Board of Estimates. What we need to remember is that the implementation of quadrennial audits was a new process that had to be built from scratch. There was no previous infrastructure in place. This is very labor-intensive, and it's a manual process, because we don't have an automated application where we can just push a button and generate the reports that are required. So it took some time to build that. Now it's in place. Now the audits are starting to be completed.
And the additional agencies can build on that same framework.
Correct.
So we're not repeating, we don't have to rebuild that structure with each further agency now?
That's right.
Okay.
Now, also, there are three external audit firms. Those audit firms had to get up to speed in terms of the city's processes, the city's chart of account structure.
Get to know us.
Now they know us, and we're going to see the dividends with round two being able to be completed sooner and round three, because now there's a greater familiarity with city process, city invoicing procedures, the budget process, et cetera, as they're drilling for the data that they're requesting.
That's a great segue to the second question, which was a process question. The law gives each agency the power to choose whether it wants to be audited by the Department of Audits or by an outside firm. You had made reference to, with human resources, that the Department of Audits had agreed that they would be able to do human resources. So now I'm trying to get a sense of, is that how it has been working, where each agency, like, an agency might ask audits, "We'd like you to do ours," and if audit says, "No, we don't have the capacity right now, you should go find an outside firm"? Has that been how it has been working?
No, it has not.
Okay.
So the way it works is, as Finance Director, I send a letter to each agency at the point where they've been selected for audit, advising them that they need to make a selection, Department of Audits or an external firm. Any agency that has requested to have their audit performed by the Department of Audits, the Department of Audits has willingly accepted that assignment. So to date, we have not had an issue where Department of Audits has turned an agency down.
It occurs to me now, I realize what, I've been thinking, well, why would an agency, why would an agency want to choose an external auditor instead of audits? Have any of the agency heads given you insight into why they would rather go with an outside firm?
Yes, because that's what the city council approved with the law.
We approved the choice.
That's right, so...
But why, but have any of them spoken to you as to why they have so chosen?
Because it's an option that's available.
Okay. Following up on that, I assume that we pay the outside auditors.
As we pay the Department of Audits also.
Oh, okay. So the agencies do pay a fee to the Department of Audits to audit them?
There's no freebies.
Well...
Now, what I'll say is this, not to be flip.
Yeah, that's okay. I flip sometimes.
The agencies do not pay for the audit out of their budget. We have a centralized account. So I treat this as, this is a citywide...
So you're, so somebody, you're going to either pay audits or you're going to pay another firm.
Right.
And that money is set aside for that purpose, no matter what?
In a centralized account, so it's not a negative impact to any of the 13 agencies.
Who would be responsible for making the assessment that, well, if audits does it, they're going to charge $100, but if, you know, Henry Costello and Stokes do it, it's going to cost $150, why are we going to Henry Costello and Stokes instead of going to audits? Who is, who's responsible for that oversight internally?
We're not, again, we give the option to the agencies because that's the way the law was written, and that's the way the charter amendment was approved. So it's an agency audit. We budget what we think is necessary.
And they have to stay within it?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay. And then the third, and this, I admit, is a detailed question, but I was flipping through the performance audit for Bureau of Revenue Collections, and I noticed that it seems almost entirely focused on inspections. And just, there was just a very slight reference to the importance of upgrading the computer systems. And the reason I was curious about that is, and I know I've had a conversation with someone in your office, and I can't remember if it was you, I'm sorry, but it was a while ago over the fact that the computer software that keeps track of the property tax accounts does so in a fashion where, and I'm sorry that if I'm not repeating this properly, but it was something along the lines of each property is kind of tracked by... but it was something along the lines of each property is kind of tracked by itself in its own way that makes it difficult for, for you, for your own office to do searches. And this, and I'm, I'm sorry, this came about specifically with an instance of someone who had received a bill for a unpaid portion of their property tax from several years earlier. And when we inquired upon it, because we couldn't, what we couldn't figure out was if, if they owed this money in 2007, why it wasn't on their 2008 bill? And the explanation was that the way the computer tracks it, it does not keep one solid ledger of, you know, this is what this owes. It does it differently. And that that is something that would be addressed in the future?
Correct, and I can address this, yeah. Essentially, what we're saying is this, we're referring to our real property tax billing system, which is a legacy-based system, meaning that it's at least 30 years old. It's a COBOL-based system. So the solution is making the investment to upgrade our city's billing system. So specifically what the issue is, bills are issued year by year. What's lacking is consolidation of all the bills. So theoretically, with a state-of-the-art system that generates a consolidated bill, if you have outstanding balances from 2009, 10, 12, 13, 15, it'll list them all-
And automatically would pop up, right.
Our present system does not do that. So anyone that's working in finance would have to look up your property year by year, one at a time. So if you don't mention that, oh, you know, I think that I have an outstanding bill from 2009, we might not look that up. We would just look up the year that you called to discuss. So with a state-of-the-art system, you'd get a consolidated bill. That's where we're headed.
So does, is the reason why that wouldn't show up in a performance audit because you're already headed there, so the auditor doesn't have to write it down to tell you that you need to do it?
No, I would say that the reason the performance measures that were selected are the measures that the president's office had input to and advised the Department of Audits.
Okay, so the scope was defined such that it was really just supposed to focus on the inspections? That wasn't, that wasn't the decision of the auditor after looking at everything to focus their report on the inspections?
It in, it included the judgment of the auditor. It included the input from the council president's office. It had no input from the finance department. Because being the auditee-
Right, right, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Councilman Costello, you may have a couple more questions. And, and then I'd like to ask Mr. Henry a couple myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First one is for the third round, which the status obviously for DHR has been updated to reflect planning, BDC and law. At what specific BOE, BOE hearing is that, are those engagement letters supposed to be presented? And please forgive me if you touched on that.
I did. Prior to the end of January.
Okay, so today's the, so either the 20th or the 27th, okay. In terms of the awards that were made to the, originally four audit firms and, and that's been narrowed down to three, plus the city auditor, when are those awards up? Do those expire at the end of the mayoral term?
The contract was for a five-year period. So I believe there's at least three years remaining. So the contracts will be in place when the new administration begins, at least a year or two.
Is there any opportunity to, I, I'm assuming the answer is no, any opportunity to modify those contracts or renegotiate those contracts to ensure that those outside audit firms have increased capacity as part of that contract to, to help speed things along, at least for, for the next term moving forward?
I would say yes. Yeah, in, in terms of increasing the capacity.
Okay, thank you. And the, the performance scope that's been agreed upon for HCD, FIRE, Moet and DGS, is that available online? Can we get that on the website? I know I had asked at the last hearing if, and the previous two hearings, if we could get the performance scope of even the first round, which is still not on the website, which I think it would be useful information for the public to have to understand, you know. I mean, we know the process, the, the council president presents, you know, his idea, his office's ideas on, on what the performance scope should include. That goes to the city auditor. City auditor's office provides input. And then that goes to the outside audit for, firm, or in the case of the city auditor directly to you. And then they use their professional judgment as they're designing the audit. It would be helpful information for the public to, to understand exactly what they're looking at. So that in the case of Bureau of Revenue Collections, they are going to be looking at inspections. Or in the case of DOT, they're going to be looking at the installation of, of traffic signals. So the, the performance scope, so just going back to that question, that will be possible to get that website updated.
It is.
All right, thank you. Can we get a timeframe commitment on when that website can get updated with the performance measures? This is something that I've been asking for since June.
Okay, I don't, I don't really recall it, but we'll respond to you. I, I can't give you a timeframe this evening, but we'll respond to you.
I certainly appreciate your attention to that, Director Raymond. Now, the performance scope has been set for, again, HCD, FIRE, DGS and Moet. Can you talk through at a high level what that performance scope includes?
Not at this point, no.
Are, are you aware of that information? Or is that information that Mr. McCarty is aware of? I mean, you must have seen the input from the council president's office and you must have provided input to the external auditor on these. Because as I understand, all four of these have been bitted out to external auditors, city auditors not participating in phase two. So if that occurred consistent with the processes that the director of finance just explained, then you must have some insight.
No, he would only, audits would only have insight on performance audits that they're doing. They wouldn't be involved at all with performance audits that the external auditors are doing. But I can add this. I'm sorry.
I, I, I must have misunderstood you and when I, when I repeated it, perhaps I said it the wrong way. My understanding was that the council president's office provided input. Then the city auditor provided input, even in the case of an external firm. But in the case of an external firm, just to clarify, the city council president's office provides input to the external firm. And then they start to design the audit and there's no input from the city auditor.
Right, no input, right.
Okay.
Now, for the round twos, based on the input with city council president, also what the external auditors are looking at, they are meeting with these age, with the agencies to determine what the, what is going to be reviewed for the performance audits. The external auditors have not reported back to finance the specific audit measurements that they're looking at because they have not been finalized with the agencies yet. So when they're finalized with the agencies, then finance will be notified. And we have not been notified yet regarding the round twos.
And do you, do you know when you expect to be notified?
Soon.
Tomorrow, a month, summer?
Sometime in the next-
Without holding you to the timeframe, just, just a general estimate of sometime in the next?
In the next month.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from Department of Transportation or no? No? So, Mr. Raymond, before we bring Department of Audits up, can you tell us what the Department of Transportation is doing, given the findings from the performance audits that you just had? How are they responding to the questions?
Well, all agencies that have findings have to report back to the Board of Estimates. And what Department of Transportation is doing is putting in places, putting in place processes for better document retention for all of their performance measures moving forward.
Okay. And is the same happening proactively with all of the agencies, given that it may be a recurrence, a reoccurring theme with the other following audits that none of the agencies or several of the agencies are not in fact documenting the matrices?
Yes. Now, that is a citywide initiative that goes beyond these 13. And we're doing that through our outcome stat budgeting process.
Okay, okay, thank you. Councilman?
Actually, that reminded me of, I had, I had had another question about outcome budgeting, which was, we've been doing outcome budgeting now for several years. And outcome budgeting requires departments to be able to provide certain metrics year after year in order to, you know, get money, to get paid. Would it be something that the auditors would look at when they are seeing what documentation is and is not being maintained to, in, in, when, I'm trying to figure out the best way to say it. I would be curious, and I don't, and I'm asking you, would an auditor be curious if there was a relationship between the fact that an agency was only maintaining those documents needed to provide the metrics that they needed to be able to show for outcome budgeting? When there may be other metrics that would be important to the everyday running of the agency, but which aren't being maintained with the, the same, shall we say, fidelity?
Yeah, I understand the question. Agencies should be maintaining all documentation to support all of their metrics.
Right.
Period. Whether it's metrics used to support budget or, or not.
I, I think what this is making me question is, and the, I'm going to use an unpleasant analogy, which is in education, there are constant complaints from advocates that when we make testing, standardized testing predominant and important, then teachers teach to the test rather than teaching a subject. And it makes me wonder if outcome budgeting, by telling agencies, these are the metrics that we care about, we being the budget bureau. These are the metrics we care about in order to, for you to get paid. Are we either inadvertently or subtly sending agencies the message that these are the only metrics that are important? Because if the other metrics were important, they would be part of the outcome budgeting mix.
Okay. So we have to clarify this. First, the budget bureau and finance department do not dictate what performance metrics the agencies use. The agencies determine the performance metrics based on the services that they provide.
Okay.
So they provide metrics based on what their primary services are, whether it's filling potholes, cleaning streets, et cetera. So the finance department does not dictate that. As it relates to this discussion, the whole issue is, what's the record retention policy? Do you maintain the documentation to support metrics that were created three years ago, four years ago? And what should the policy be going forward? So the, the point of this discussion is, is that finance is not dictating to the agencies what the performance metrics should be. The agencies are providing the metrics to demonstrate what services they are providing to the citizens of the city.
Okay.
Are you good?
Yeah. Am I, am I good? I don't know, but I'll accept that as an answer.
Thank you, all right. You have something else, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Director Raymond, can you, can you walk us through, I know you and I have talked about this, the, the process by which the, for lack of a better phrase, the books were recreated and why that needed to be done? Can you go through that? And, and please use layman's terms.
Okay.
Where possible.
The discussion that we've had is that in order to prepare or to execute financial audits at the agency level, financial statements, incomes, income statement balance sheet have to be prepared at the department level. The city's accounting system was never designed to generate income statements and balance sheets at the agency level. Now, those types of statements, financial statements are routinely prepared at the citywide level, which generates the comprehensive annual financial report, which is an audit report that's prepared by external audit firm and the Department of Audits on an annual basis. For the last four years, our external firm has been KPMG. So the issue is, is that we're now building manually financial statements at the agency level that have never been prepared before. That we're building manually because the city's accounting system was never designed to have to build income statements and balance sheets at an agency level. Now, with that said, let's be very clear. There are many financial reports available that are prepared that demonstrate all of the agency transactions at the agency level. You can get reports that show what's budgeted or appropriated and what's been expended and what the available balance is at any level of detail. What we refer to as sub-object detail. So for example, if you want to know how much has been spent for travel, but you want to do a deeper drill, how much has been spent for in-state travel, out-of-state travel? How much for mileage? You can drill down. So the issue is, is that for quadrennial audit process, financial statements, income statement balance sheet had to be prepared at the agency level. And it was not satisfactory to use budgetary information versus expenditure information. If we had been able to provide reports for all of the agencies based on budgeted appropriation at the sub-object detail, so if the agency's budget was a million dollars, you could see the 500 line items that totaled the million. And right next to that, how much was spent in any given fiscal year, those statements could have been provided in a week.
Can I throw in a but?
Yes.
And that is documentation, just as we've seen in the performance audits. You may be able to look at those objects, but could we actually produce a receipt that said this was spent at wherever Staples or at the gas pump or where it may have been? Or could we have shown that and aren't, isn't it also pretty clear? And aren't, isn't it also pretty clear that we're out of step with the state of Maryland and most of the surrounding jurisdictions in this matter? And the fact that we don't audit our individual agencies, and they're not set up to produce such financial records? And, and as well as maybe many, many, many major cities around the United States?
Okay, so, let me address the first question.
Okay.
Regarding documentation. So, the example I used was travel. So, you had a thousand dollars for travel, 500 for in-state travel, 500 out-of-state travel. If you wanted to see what made up that $500 for out-of-state travel, yes, there would be documentation for, let's say it was Henry Raymond, one expense voucher for $500.
Right.
That would be able to be pulled.
With the receipts.
If it's a transaction in the accounting system, we should have the documentation to support that transaction because it represents an expenditure that was paid through the city's accounting system.
Right.
Now, in reference to the, the second part of the question about are we out of step with other jurisdictions, the state, yes, they require agencies to undergo legislative audit every three years. The city's charter has not required that. It was always believed that the CAF, or the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the accompanying A133 single audit for, audit of major federal grants was significant for the city. The council felt otherwise, passed the charter amendment, and we fully support doing these audits at the agency level. The, the, the real issue is putting the infrastructure in place to be able to do these audits efficiently.
Okay, thank you. You, did you, you finish your question?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it, Mr. Henry. We're gonna, Mr. Raymond will always do that, don't we?
You're big on me.
Thank you. It was a pleasure to present this information.
Sure.
I'd just like to say thank you to the citizens, members of the university that have come out in attendance to, to learn more about a process where we're trying to make sure that we're safeguarding the city's assets.
Thank you again. We're going to ask the Department of Audits if they would come forward, please, and speak to their findings of the performance audit of the Department of Finance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Bob McCarty. I'm the city auditor. I'll be available for all your questions. I did want to say we have accepted all of the audits that we have been allowed to bid on. We have done Department of Finance, the financial audit. We have done one, only one of our five performance audits. The second one, which is risk management. It should be completed in the next week or so. The other three, if you need details, are those we are in process. We have started purchases, the preliminary planning, and then we're going to go on to Treasury, and then on to the Financial Integrity Unit of Finance, of Budgets. We were not awarded any of the second round. We have been awarded two in the third round. One is BDC, the Baltimore Development Corporation. We will only be doing the, the performance side of that, however, because they get their own financial audit. Mr. Raymond has presented those to me, and they do meet all of their, all of the requirements. I don't remember the name of the firm offhand, but client. Client Associates, maybe? T.R. Client and Company.
Okay.
At some point, they'll be presented to the board and the council as part of the package for BDC. And Mr. Raymond approached me, oh, maybe a week or so ago, about also doing human resources. He was concerned if we would have the resources to do it and meet the deadline of December 2016. And we have made arrangements for that. We can do that one also. We are currently, we have currently, to do these, we have allocated 19% of our total staff. We believe it's important we accomplish this by December 16, and we are putting the, our staff on that. That has caused problems, not, not that we can't overcome, of doing our other audits. We are thinly staffed. And we have not received increases in our requests for audit resources in the past. Once this came about, we had, we asked for additional resources in our 16 budget, and we were not given those. And we are requesting them again for our 17 budget, to hope we can do more of these quadrennial audit functions. We are fully committed to finish all of our audits mandated by the quadrennial audit requirement by December 2016.
Counselman?
I was intrigued to learn that you charge city agencies for being audited, given that you are the Department of Audits. And not, 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 this is not to say that you don't deserve to be paid. I was just intrigued by the concept that that's how we make it work. So, you charge agencies for being audited, and that revenue is built into your budget?
Yes. It's hard to explain, but...
I got time.
Okay. But historically, we have never billed an agency that would be general funds. Until this, we would do the single audit, which is the audit of all of the federal financial assistance that received by the, by the, by the city. And CDVG would be an example. We would bill HCD. And, and under, under the law, CDVG funds can be used to pay us for those funds, for those, for those services.
Okay.
We have charged retirement systems before, but not the, but not the library, because the library is basically general funds, as, as examples. We don't charge... We do charge 911, because that's allowed under, under the, the state law. Who else do we?
We don't charge for World Memorial.
No, World Memorial we do not charge, because it's general funds.
But, but, but now, because of this, now you're charging regular general fund agencies?
Yes.
And so, I'm trying to, again, make sure I ask this in the right way. When you charge them that fee, which would be, I would hope slash expect to be in the range of what an outside firm would charge?
I'm not sure of all the outside firms off the top of my head, but I believe we'd be a little cheaper. We don't have a profit built in.
Okay. So, when you do that, that money that you collect from the agencies goes into the general fund?
Yes, for us.
So, it just, the money just gets moved around on paper?
Yes.
But it comes from some other fund and comes to you, but you don't get to spend it?
We believe we can use that for upgrading computers and our software, and hopefully getting additional staff with that at some point.
That's, okay, that's where I'm going. When you say, "Hopefully get additional staff at some point", how long have you been collecting fees for doing? I mean, this has been going on now for a little bit, so...
Yeah, just recently. The last, since we, we bill at completion. So, we finished the finance. That's when we would...
So, that's, so you've, so you've only actually billed for the one, two?
Yeah, actually, we haven't actually billed yet. I have to work out the procedures with Henry and everything, but yes.
Okay. Do, do you have some type of, so that, but there's an expectation that once you have completed and you bill, and that money gets shifted around on paper so that it's on...
Like journal entry, I imagine.
Yeah, journal entry. I, actually, I go through a similar thing when I pay rent on my district office to general services.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Like, we're moving the money from one part of the vault to the other corner of the vault. All right. So, when you do that, have, has, has anyone in budget said, "Well, now that you're doing this, we are clearly going to have to give you more staff because you are doing work that is saving us from sending money outside of the system"?
We, we are hoping that develops.
But there's no commitment?
We're just going through the normal budget process.
Okay. I, I think we may have taken this as far as we can go here, and maybe this should move over to be a question for the Budget Committee.
Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks. You did have, you did have five findings, I think, in this first.
Yes.
Can you just talk a little bit about that and your recommendation? I think you had 10 recommendations. You can do an overview, but would you be a little more specific for the committee, as well as the general public, about your findings?
Is this on the financial audit? I'm sorry. The financial audit or the, or the performance audit we're talking about?
The performance audit.
Performance audit, okay. Actually, there are, there are five findings. Is that what you had?
There are five findings, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could you tell us?
Okay. This is going to kill a little bit of time. You okay with that?
Well, you know, you can go over them quickly and then talk about recommendations and, and...
Okay.
And then, and as an auditor, and as a system, as a city, Mr. Henry, Mr. Raymond, I keep doing that. So, did you tell us, how do you fix them? And, and is there a, a, a reaudit of the findings? And then a report back, and, and if there have been corrected?
To, to answer that question, I, I believe it's, I can't remember, is it 90 days or six months we report back to the board on it? I don't have that with me, though.
Okay. So, there's a nine, is it 90 days or six months?
I can't, six months, okay.
Six months, they will report, you'll report back to the Board of Estimates in terms of your addressing of the findings? Great. Okay. So, talk a little bit about the findings, and then we'll move to the public comments, and then we'll close.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. We did, our first one was the Bureau of Revenue Collections, and we did the inspection unit. Our purpose was to assess the internal controls and the related policies and procedures currently in place to monitor, control, and report activities related to the inspection unit. We noted five areas where the effectiveness of the control procedures could be improved. The first was that, and this is like a page and a half. We'll try and really shorten it. So, if I'm not doing enough, please let me know. The daily inspection visits were not scheduled and assigned to the inspectors in an efficient and effective manner. Each full-time inspector is assigned approximately 50 inspections per day from a database that controls over 17, that contains over 17,000 addresses that they use for their licensed inspections. However, we found that there were only 2,500, approximately 2,500 businesses that actually had active licenses. So, based on that, we recommended that changes be made in the methodology in which the daily inspections are scheduled and assigned to increase the efficiency and effectiveness and reduce the number of non-inspections. To give you some examples of our test, of the inspection tickets, we found that only 8% of the tickets tested were for completed inspections. These, and this, it's based on their manual. Since the inspection tickets contained handwritten inspectors' notes for such items as type of license and/or device and number of devices, acqua-licence number, and a number of violations noted during these inspections. According to the inspection's policies and procedures, all tickets must have the owner's signature, the title and phone number, to be counted as part of the daily inspections. However, only 38% of these completed inspections, which were 8% of the total, were signed by the owner representative. The remaining visits that were considered not completed by us were 46% of them were for no licence required, 11% were for out of business, 9% were for closed, 9% were for residence, and 70% were either blank, as if the tickets contain no inspection or notes or comments, or they were unknown, or the inspection tickets were to vacant properties or lots. So, that follows back to the recommendation that we recommend that the methodologies be changed and adapt alternative procedures to determine whether any of the establishments noted for such as no licence required, closed, or out of business, or residential, be, be basically in a separate population.
Okay.
And, and Finance was, or is, updating its database. And we recommend that the Department of Finance continue its efforts to upgrade its database system so that it can readily identify the number of businesses with each type of licence, whether those licences are current, and the number of times each businesses was inspected during the year. That's basically a real quick overview of the first one. Is that, okay?
I must do.
I'm sorry?
Henry.
Hey, we're, we're going to be consulting.
My sharp-eyed colleagues have sent me a note. The guy in the striped tie is Mr. Raymond, and the guy in the paisley tie is Mr. Henry. So, I'll refer to my code card here.
Okay, I'll, I'll leave the tie out like, like this to, for, for easier, for easier identification. I noted something in your findings, and I'm looking through, and I'm not seeing a comment on this note. But if I, if I'm, if I'm missing it, I, I'll, please call my attention. Each full-time inspector is assigned approximately 50 inspection visits daily.
True.
Now, I had a similar conversation with Mr. Chow at one point when we were talking about the water meter readers and what their expected ability was to check water meters. 50 inspection visits daily is an inspection visit given a 7.4-hour workday. That's 8 minutes and 53 seconds per visit, including travel time.
Agree, yes.
That seems unlikely.
Just seems like it.
And so, I am curious why it would be, you, you, you acknowledge the existence of it in your, in your performance audit. It, do you comment, would, would it be appropriate for you to comment and say, "That seems hard to do"? Like, just from a common sense perspective of unless every single day they're going to five places where there are 10 businesses right next to each other?
They do certain areas at once. Henry, maybe, I'm sorry, Mr. Raymond could probably address that.
Yeah, to, to address your question, when the inspectors go out, they go up and down blocks. So, the system we use is based on a geographical system. So, it's not like, excuse me, it's not like they look at two locations, get in their vehicle, and drive across town.
Right, I get that.
We, we try to do it where they'll park the car, and maybe for the next three or four hours, they're just doing all of the properties that are on the list for that particular route.
And all they have to do when they're inspecting the business is they just walk in and see if the business is there?
Ask for the licence.
And ask to see the licence.
Right.
And...
Or confirm that it is a vacant lot.
Yeah, okay.
Confirm that if there is a business there, that it's the, the, the correct business that's supposed to be there. If our records indicate it's a shoe store, and now it's a carryout food shop, the record has to be updated, and the determination made, does that new entity have the appropriate licences?
Okay. I...
Because remember, these businesses go in and out of business routinely.
I, 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 I get that. We, we have, on the York Road corridor, there's a retail business district license area where, you know, we have to check every couple of months in some parts of it to see if a business has popped up and needs to be reached out to about the RBDL, or has one disappeared?
Exactly.
Sometimes popping up and disappearing before actually paying. But, but, but I digress. I, I can see if the entire city was designed like the commercial, a commercial corridor... I, I can see if the entire city was designed like the commercial, a commercial corridor like York Road where you could accomplish that, where you could just go boom, 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 boom. But there, I, just as I think about different parts of the city, where there are corner, there's corner retail over here, and there is no other retail right near it, such that somebody is going to have to get in their car and move to the next one. I guess what I, the way I should ask this is, is the number, is the, is, is the, I'm, can I use the word quota?
Sure.
Is, is the quota of 50 inspection, or the target, is the target of 50 inspection visits daily reached by looking at what can actually be accomplished and basing on that, or is it, is that target arrived at by dividing the total number of inspections that you know have to happen by the number of inspectors that you have, and, well, this just work has to get done, so this is how they're, how many they're going to have to do?
It's based on what we reasonably anticipate they can accomplish on a daily basis.
Okay.
Now, the, the way we can get efficiency is the implementation of a, a new system that can help us with better routing. We, we use the water system because that has all the addresses, but we try to do it in a way where inspectors are not hopping back and forth across town all day.
There should be software, there's, there's route designing software you should be able to get that wouldn't even be, I'm not talking about like huge enterprise systems, but just like little desktop stuff where you just give it a bunch of addresses and it plots a route for you.
So, so we're working with Lloyd on that now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
Okay, on to finding two, okay?
We're good.
Is that?
You may continue. Thank you, sir.
Okay. There are numerous discrepancies between the inspector's time and attendance information included in their daily attendance records and the time and attendance information recorded on Etime, which is the city's payroll timekeeping system. For example, there were several days during the six-month period selected for testing where the inspectors were marked present on Etime, but the DARs, the Daily Expenditure Report for those days, were either blank or showed that the inspectors were on leave. We also noted that several times inspectors were present according to the DARs, but no time was accorded on Etime. We did not see any historical edits, which are corrections made, subsequent corrections made on the payroll, recorded on Etime, for any of the discrepancies noted above. We felt as consequently some inspectors may have been overpaid or underpaid, or the inspector's leave balances may be incorrect. We believe that the discrepancies occur because the DARs do not contain any evidence of supervisory review and approvals, and there are no reconciliations performed between the information on the DARs and the information recorded on Etime. We recommend that the DARs be modified to include a, a space to record supervisory review and approvals. We also recommended that the time and attendance information recorded on the DARs be reconciled to the applicable information recorded on Etime. We further recommended that the Bureau of Revenue Collections review the summary of payroll discrepancies provided and make the appropriate adjustments, adjustments as required. I should note that I don't have the full report with me, but Finance did respond to this, Collections did respond to this, and they did not always agree with us. They did submit additional information, or they will be submitting additional information to hopefully resolve this finding.
I'm sorry. Having a little discussion. So, were you completed? I apologize.
That was finding number two. Any questions on that, or?
Great. Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the committee? No? Okay. We're good. I apologize.
Okay.
We're good.
Continue on, or are you done with?
We're finished.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Counselor, you're good? Thank you. All right. Public comments. Kim Truhod. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. McCarty, I'm sorry. One last question. You mentioned that 20% of your staff was allocated to addressing quadrennial audits?
Yes, currently, yes.
And of the first five awarded in the first round, you had Finance and DPW. So you had four audits at Finance, right, the three performance audits, and then the one financial covering the entire department, and then a financial and performance at DPW, and none in the second round?
Correct.
And DHR in the third round, and you're doing one half?
Just performance of, yes, BDC.
Just performance on BDC, and then, and then both financial and performance for DHR?
Correct.
Yes, correct.
Okay. How many, how many FTEs of auditors is that, that have been working on?
Currently, seven.
Seven.
And we were probably, we will adding, we'll be adding at least two or three more to do HR, to get that in.
Okay. And then, follow-up question for, for Director, oh, actually for you.
Sure.
So, so there's been an increase requested in the 2017 budget?
Yes, it has, yes.
And I assume the answer, an increase for the city auditor for your shop?
Yes, additional staffing.
And I assume, A, you're not in a position to discuss the status of that request per a hearing we had yesterday, if I'm not mistaken, but B, at some point in the near future before the ordinance of estimates is introduced, you'll be in a position to discuss that with the council? Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. McCarty.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, sure. Go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, so I appear at the, the podium to address a point of clarification regarding the Baltimore Development Corporation. The Baltimore Development Corporation is a quasi-public agency. So by law, they have the right to have their own external auditor?
Yeah.
Because they're not a true city agency. So when they were created, there's a requirement that they have to have an external audit.
Sure.
They have an audit by an external audit firm in the corporate world. Because they were included in the Charter Amendment for the Quadrennial Charter Amendment that requires them to have a financial audit and a performance audit, it's been determined that the external financial audits that they've had each year qualify for the financial audit for this purpose, so there's not a need to duplicate the audit.
Right.
However, they do have to do a performance audit, and they selected the Department of Audits for the performance audit. They could have selected one of the external firms, but they selected Department of Audits.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank you, Director Raymond, for not wasting unnecessary resources on a financial audit that did not need to occur, because it already has.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Truhod.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for holding this hearing and being considerate enough of the citizens of Baltimore to bring it out into the community. And I am hopeful that that will occur more often, and not necessarily downtown.
We've been in, no, no. We, we've held, we've been in communities, but go ahead, sure.
Yeah.
Other communities now.
Okay, yeah, where you don't have to pay the part. Right.
Right.
So, I'm concerned that one of the functions of the city is to care for its people. And the Mayor's Office of Human Services is not one of the 13 agencies that's being audited. And I think that at some point in time, someone should consider amending this piece of legislation to ensure that that entity gets audited, because we have lots of evidence that the delivery of human services to the citizens of Baltimore is a little bit suspect. And I think there's an opportunity to look at that. In hearing the testimony from the auditor and, and Mr. Raymond, one of the things that concerns me is that when the audits department accepts an audit without benefit of the performance metrics, that's sort of troubling. I mean, they're going to do it, I know, but, but I, I wasn't clear that the performance metrics were available before they made their decision to, to accept the audit.
We'll, we'll, he'll, I'll ask him to speak to it.
Okay, great, great. I appreciate Mr. Henry's slide, I mean, excuse.
K3.
Mr. Raymond's slide that audits are a routine city business practice. I appreciate that. And I think having a robust audit system is very important, and is something that the citizens of Baltimore truly want. I think there's a conflict of interest with Finance acting as the contracts manager and administrator, especially on their own contract audit. I, I'm not real clear how that works, but I'm sure you're going to look at that. And it's not really clear to me, as the contract manager, when the company comes into the government and says, okay, this is the contract and the body of work that we're doing, when there are issues, who's doing the mitigating of those issues? And as we've seen, some of these contracts have been delayed because of issues, okay? And so the contractor is coming in and asking questions, all right, to help work through whatever those issues are. So who's making those judgments, those decisions about giving the contractor relief if they need relief from some contractual binding aspect? Or what? You know, are we getting the full measure of the audit? Or is somebody making exceptions? And, and how does that info get back to, to those who require the audit be done? And there was a little brief discussion about the metrics, and whether the metrics were the same as the annual budget outcomes, or the budget goals for outcome budgeting. Every year when the budget is released, there are outcome budgeting goals established with the release of that budget. Who prepares those outcome budgeting goals? And, and they are supposedly the performance metrics used by each agency. So when I hear that there are a different set of performance metrics being generated, do they conflict with what they've been told, the agencies have been told to do, with the money they've been given? And, and who makes the decision that the outcome budgeting goals can or cannot be pushed aside to achieve the audit goals? And is, is there some deconfliction that goes on with that, if there potentially is a problem? And, and who exactly is doing the performance metrics? I heard something about Council President. Is he the only one that is weighing in? I, I need some clarity. I think the citizens of Baltimore deserve some clarity about who's making these metrics up. The document retention issues is another thing that concerns me, because I spend a tremendous amount of time, less so lately, in a place called Legislative Reference, up on the sixth floor of City Hall. And Legislative Reference is supposedly the retainer of all things city document-wise. And there is currently written policy about what documents are retained by Legislative Reference and what documents are not. Now, I've been complaining about Legislative Reference for some time. So what I am hearing today is that, that whether or not we currently have written policy is not being followed. And, and, and in terms of new retention policy, let's get the old retention policy straight before we start generating new retention policy. Because while ideally, documents should be available to the public, they're not. And so are we going to create more policy that doesn't allow the public to see these documents, which is already in writing, that we should have access to? I'm looking forward to, to, to more audits coming sooner. And I, like you, Councilman Stokes, have grave concerns that if round one audit started in March of last year and still aren't completed, how can round three start in January and be completed by December?
Thank you. We heard a, a number of comments and questions, and some of which we will, all of which, actually, we, meaning staff, will delve into, and then in a report back to committee, will try to answer several of the comments and questions that were spoken to. And we'll do a broad, we'll put it on our website so that it will be a part of the record. The answers to some of those questions and comment will be publicly vetted. Councilman, you have something?
Oh, I was, I was just going to comment, having, having worked with Legislative Reference off and on for quite a period of time, that they do suffer from the same problem that Mr. McCarty's agency suffers from, in the sense of they repeatedly ask for additional resources in the budget process, and rarely, if ever, receive additional resources in which to provide the increasing amount of openness and transparency that policymakers have been setting over the last 25 years. We keep requiring more and more from them when we change our rules, but we never give them more staff or resources with which to prov, and I'm sorry, I'm using never. I try not to use those types of, but we don't, we don't regularly and routinely give them additional resources to make that transparency more effective.
So, to my point, this new committee that's looking at retention, where do we retain the stuff? Where is it, they have, if you're going to put a committee in place to come up with a whole new set of procedures to retain documents, and we don't know how to retain them today, there, there has to be a resource, like after.
I think many of us look forward to the committee coming up with an answer to that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to? If you like. Okay.
In the interest of time, I'll keep my remarks brief. We'll start with the contract management issues. The Finance Department was selected to administer the process The finance department was selected to administer the process because of the Department of Audits could not administer the process because they have a conflict of interest because they're also auditing some of these agencies. So the finance director and the controller worked out a process where it was determined that the Department of Finance would administer the process. It was reduced to writing in the administrative manual. Now, as it relates to the contract management issues, as I've indicated earlier, the finance department's only role is to get the external firms under contract, pay the bills. If there are issues that come up, those issues have to get worked out between the audit firm and the agency that they're performing the engagement for. The finance department does not get involved in any of those issues. Now, as it relates to outcome budgeting, there's extensive consultation with the agencies in the determination of what the performance metrics should be. The agencies have considerable input into what those are. Again, the finance department does not arbitrarily assign and dictate to the agencies what those measures should be. Now, a point of clarification, when we indicated that, when I indicated that the council president and the president's office plays a role in the determination of what's going to be examined for performance measures, for the performance audit, I use the term performance measures. Really, what the president's office is doing is sharing what they believe may be performance issues or operational issues. So I'll clarify that it's perform, performance issues or operational issues as opposed to performance metrics. Now finally, regarding the retention policy, there are retention policies in city government for things like how long do payroll records have to be maintained? How long do grants information have to be retained? There specifically was no retention policy regarding how long the agencies have to retain documentation that their metrics were based around. Because remember, outcome budgeting started four years ago. When we implemented and introduced performance metrics, the documentation to support why this measure, what's the methodology behind selecting, whether it's potholes to be filled, miles of streets to be cleaned, tons of trash to be collected, et cetera, there was not a specific policy for the retention of that documentation and that methodology. That's what this audit committee will be looking at. So I just wanted to clarify that, yes, there are retention policies, but there wasn't one specific for this particular subject matter.
All right. Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Raymond, okay, thank you. Yes, sure, would you like to add something? Thank you. You're Mr. McCarthy, right?
Yes.
I just wanted to concur with Henry. The president did have input, but we, as all the other auditors do, we do a, we do understanding of the systems and we do a risk analysis before we choose what we're doing. Just wanted to clarify that.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Wayne Alfercon, Fucon, I'm sorry.
Should I wait for Bill Henry to come back? I'm joking. My name is Wayne Alfercon and my council member is Mr. Bill Henry. I live in his district. And I'd like to thank this panel for allowing me to share a few ideas and speak for a few minutes and say Happy New Year to everyone here and for coming out to support the community. Basically, I'm a strong supporter of the current administration, subjectively and objectively. I'm also a strong supporter of the city council and our form of government. And I think that in speaking and sharing my suggestions, I would like it to be interpreted as both this mayor and this administration and members of the city council be proactive and collaborating. The system's broke and we keep talking around it and allocating money around it and dancing around it. And we could say, we could start with the metrics question, which wasn't my original opening, but the metrics and measurement can, and I'd like to make a recommendation to you, Councilmember Stokes, and East Baltimore, my family, Caroline Street, Middle Street, we love you, Mr. Stokes. That's another story.
Sure.
The metrics and measurement can be automated and tracked daily using basic data mining algorithms. That's old news, off the shelf, you don't have to put out any more money. And that ties into not allocating proper resources to Legislative References and other agencies. People are fighting information technology because for jobs or whatever reason, this is off-the-shelf technology, don't need IBM, you don't need the mayor's favorite information technology firm. These algorithms are available in every college and university, they can do it. The data mining industry, along with the cloud industry, has blown away. There's no excuse for the promise, the continued promise of transparency since Smoke, when he allocated the 6 million and still it wasn't put in place. In fact, in fact, finance and audit and budget do need more staff. It's not so much that the city is shrinking less population, the budget has increased and it's more complicated. We have much more compliance oversight at the federal, state, and tripartite system. These folks are shorthanded in reality. And our Department of Finance and budgeting needs new technology as well. Again, the data miner, the data mining process should not be farmed out. These guys got college degrees, give them the equipment, the software and the algorithm off the shelf, let's do it. And how it works is on a daily basis, there's a checkoff and the data will just automatically be shared where it's supposed to go. When we start an audit, it doesn't have to be redone from jump, they're just validating, that's what audit does, it validates reality, validates facts. So we shouldn't have to reinvent the wheel, but we're in denial here because the openness and transparency issue has decreased in this city with this broken website and the promise. Legislative Affairs is a sham, it's worse than the kindergarten place. Have you ever been in the kindergarten room with the kids and the toys and the books and all that beat up stuff and, that's a joke, Legislative Reference isn't even Legislative Reference, and that stuff is 18, 19, you know, stock, folks. When they created DVDs and scanning, the federal government under Jimmy Carter scanned and everything. That's how far behind the curve we are. And Louis Goldstein was ready for Y2K before he stepped down as controller, giving out his little fake gold coins. Come on, guys. This hearing is good if you're going to come out of it and do something. MCC. My background's real estate, whenever we asked for an opportunity to meet with the city and the city council, it said MCC, mayor and city council would like this property, mayor and city council would like to do this in the community, come on, work together. We can do the politics later. It's the same money, it's the same tax dollars, and I only got a few minutes. Let me go real quick. What are the current levels of technology for integrated mobile hardware system for registration, monitoring, and tracking compliance? We've got GIS, GPS. It's a basic community college class, thing on your desk button, everybody's got these pins where they track and you, come on, what's the discussion here? Give them the money. Oh, they got pins. You need to watch what you say over there in the city council, the hottest thing on the internet. All the kids have it. The audit collection data can be attached to an SDA form or the annual property tax or the water bill or property tax, just like city stat, you talk about city stat in that joke. How come we are putting these auditors and their departments through all this work? Data mining is a new industry, a bunch of, we should not outsource a thing. We have the high school kids can do this, the community colleges can do this, Morgan, John Hawkins, University of Maryland, U of M, we have this technology, we invented it right here in the state. If we walk out of this meeting and I come and talk to you, City Councilman Costello, and we love Bill Henry, Benihana actually came to the house, he actually came to the house. And you, Mrs. Stokes.
Yes.
And that young lady beside you went to University of Maryland College Park, so she knows where I'm coming from, she knows that I'm, I should be in timeout room, but I converted the principal, so you can't put me in timeout no more. We need to fix this coming out of this meeting. And don't go after the mayor's staff, don't make this a political football. What makes it beautiful is the benefit, is that it's happened, that it nourished to everybody's benefit, that's in the Congress for everybody, but let's not make this a political football. And don't not fund the mayor's team because we waiting for some political gain. It's about me and everybody here who are citizens and taxpayers. So let's do the audit collection thing, real-time data mining, algorithm, GIS, GPS, and don't play with people's money. I recommend that the off-the-shelf software with the GIS and GPS tracking system programs and classes with the RFID can be attached to each building, just like BG&E. And eight minutes works. They own time with that. We don't have to go and interview you, you sent me the data, it's already been shared, and I just come by and verify. They halfway home, give them the rest of the money. And give them some nice vehicles because the potholes need to be fixed. We need to in-source the work, I'm tired of you outsourcing everything. I applaud the mayor, I don't see any more of these Flanagan trucks and other trucks doing all the subcontracting, I see more and more city trucks, more and more people who don't need top secret clearances doing this work, fixing the streets in the ground, doing the infrastructure work on $1.5 billion repair. We got $1.5 billion for infrastructure and water bills, how come we can't fix, and this is a million dollar fix, by the way, this auditing problem, I can show you the software, you don't need IBM, you don't need anybody out of DC, you don't need 3C, Seaball, any of them, SAP, this is off the shelf. Before Radio Shack went out of business, they had it at Radio Shack. So let's not make a political football out of this. So, well, I'm repeating myself because they haven't heard me since Smoke. You have to tell somebody something 17 times before it clicks. Pepsi generation, Pepsi generation, Coke is it, Coke is it, Coke is it. Leave this meeting and fix it for a million bucks, off-the-shelf software. Let me close. Additional resources, the money's already there, just reprogram it. The mayor's office, partnering with the city council, can use students. Hawkins issued a policy on the food deserts, that was a research. Before the Urbanite magazine went out of business, they published it. While I, you got these food trucks, that's a joke. But the real database went to Beth Strowman in the Office of Sustainability, that was a funded study. Students, I don't want any outsourcing on this, in-sourcing, if there's outsourcing, I'm going after the company and whoever proposed the outsourcing. In-source, the auditors, and when I say go after, I mean politically, I'm going to de-elect somebody and I'm capable of doing it. Mr. Stokes, you know that. Ask Lawrence Bell. And I'm not here to threaten you, I'm here to let you know that there's still somebody who belongs in the principal's office after he was in the kindergarten, who didn't do his timeout, and the principal is now on my side. Guys, y'all wasting our money, not you, collectively. So MCC, give this team what they need, bring them all the way, don't partially update them. I was in DC, I personally handled Marion Bird's drug trial, four other people, you can go up and find it in archives. This was when he ran, 89, we had more data scanning, optical stuff, we had the top-ranked stuff in 89. That's how he got off. Sheila Dixon shouldn't run for office, by the way, oop, I had to get that in. So.
Okay, we're going to have to.
But my point to you is.
I need you to close out.
I'm going to close out.
Thank you.
And I'm going to be redundant and repetitive because you all have been redundant, repetitive, not doing what could have been done when Smoke allocated $6 million to do this. Let's do it. That's my recommendation, summed up, integrated, hardware, software, data mining system using GPI, and give them their money and also give your team their money.
Great.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be putting.
No, no, you're good, you're good. Thank you, thank you for all the data and for the input, Councilman.
You prayed it before.
Yep. Did you?
It wasn't a question, I just wanted to make a comment related to Wayne's remark. First of all, I agree 100% with the idea of, I think we should be encouraging more work that can be done in-house be done in-house, especially if we can demonstrate that it would be cheaper to do it in-house. And so I would strongly encourage at this point, and I'll share this with the Budget Committee when we get to the, my gosh, this will be the 2017, fiscal 2017, but the idea that now that this charter amendment has been in effect long enough for us to have a sense of what the workload is that it creates, I think we should be looking very strongly at the idea of a significant increase, and I don't mean just more resources, but a significant increase to the Department of Audits and perhaps even a change to the charter to make it clear that agencies only get to select an outside firm if audits says, we can't take you on because we're full. And I would use as a precedent for that, real estate has made it very clear to me over the last several years that they have made it an onstanding policy to try to move city agencies out of privately owned buildings and into city-owned buildings wherever possible and encourage greater use of city-owned property rather than paying rent out to external landlords. The other comment I wanted to make, and this is more of a general disclaimer, that usually I have to make around budget time, but especially since there are people watching at home when testimony is given addressing the council saying, you need to give them the money, or you need to put the money into this, this is my, you know, annual reminder to the people of Baltimore City that the mayor and city council are a corporate entity in the big picture, but when it comes to the budget, the mayor sets a budget and sends it to the council, and the council by charter cannot add to it. If the mayor says, this is how much money this agency is getting, and this is how much money this agency is getting, we can reduce that allocation, we can cut line items where we think too much money is being spent on something, we can even ask the mayor to move the money that we're cutting from somewhere else over here to an agency that we feel needs more resources. We can ask politely, but we have no actual power to move that money if the mayor does not acquiesce. And I am making this point every year as I do because we have a charter amendment sitting in committee that would allow the council the ability to, when it cuts from one line item, move that amount of money to another line item. So we could actually say, well, over here, we think human resources, just to pick on them because they were the audit topic, we think that they could get by with $25,000 less, and we're going to take that $25,000 and we're going to give it to Legislative Reference so that they can buy better scanners, so that they can, or a sheet feeder for their scanners, so that they can scan more documents and make them more accessible. We could do that if that power was given to us by a charter amendment, but we can't do that now. And I just make, I have a policy myself of making that clear whenever we have these kind of discussions, that while you may think or expect that your elected city council gets to decide how much money gets spent on things, we have very specific limits in our authority for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman, do you have something before we go back to the public testimony?
Yes, very briefly, three points, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number one, in the spirit of Mr. Williams' comments, it's worth reiterating, as he reiterated so many times, what Councilman Henry just said, the city council does not have the charter authority to set the budget, it's the mayor's office that does that. Number two, my colleagues may disagree with me, I hope Director Raymond and Mr. McCarthy, you do agree with me, I think there is a spirit of working together, especially on this issue, and those comments create a narrative and spin a narrative and further a narrative that is frankly not true and is not what our city needs right now. City council members are trying to work with the administration.
Sure.
Work with the comptroller's office.
Absolutely.
To advance the city forward. And third, while we're not here to debate the history of whether or not the audits are conducted by the city auditor being internal or outside external firms, the reality of the matter is that that was a dispute between the mayor's office and the comptroller's office and had nothing whatsoever to do with the city council. Again, not here to place blame, not here to say whether it's right or wrong, but it had nothing to do with the city council. And I think that often gets lost and that questions come up, what is the city council doing to complete the audits? The city council. The city council has virtually no power on this issue, this is what we are doing, we're having oversight hearings and trying to bring information to the public. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman.
Good evening. Oh, I'm sorry, Bill Henry was a professor of mine, so he always gives me this look whenever I talk, so, yeah.
It's a look of pride.
Um, so, thank you for one coming to UB, I'm a student here at the university, um, it gave me an opportunity to sit on in a hearing, so I really appreciate it. Um, I've been hearing about audits, um, offhand for a while now through like newspaper, newspaper articles and stuff like that, so I have very minimal knowledge about everything that's going on, but enough to really understand and follow. So I just had a few questions that I thought were really important. Um, my first big question is, everyone keeps talking about the December two thousand sixteen deadline, what are the repercussions if this deadline isn't met? Like, what happens? The mayor's not gonna be there anymore, their, their whole administration, her whole administration's gonna be gone, so what are repercussions if the audits aren't done by then? Secondly, I wanted to know why there was a, um, why the charter amendment allowed for outside audits, um, it doesn't, you know, the whole point of governance is that account, especially American governance and our governance is accountability to the people and by giving, um, audit power to outside firms, I don't see how that accountability would be the same as a city agency, um, the Department of Audits doing it, how that would be, um. And thirdly, um, I've been hearing in the newspaper articles and in the discussions here that inefficiency is a really big problem in these state, city departments and agencies. Um, as a citizen, how can I trust that these city government agencies are operating in good faith when their performance, uh, audits or financial audits, well, mainly we're hearing performance audits, show that they aren't keeping proper documentation? How can I trust that, that's, everything's going, is working adequately? And to tie that into the budget process, because a lot of people were talking about budget, if the agencies aren't documenting things correctly and stuff like that, what right do they have to ask for more money in the budget? That's, so, yeah, that was mine.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Very good questions.
Right, and we will, uh, not totally answer them here this evening, but we will, as part of our report, and we'll place them up unless someone wants to speak to any piece of that.
Oh, you, I was gonna ask if you...
Henry and Costello.
Okay, you do that and I'll do Y2 outside, I'll do it all.
So as to the, uh, legal question, and Director Raymond, correct me if I'm wrong, we asked that in the November hearing, I think, we had a representative from the Department of Law, um, that came to our hearing, Dwayne, and he talked about the, the ramifications and there's really no ramifications, uh, specified in the charter. Presumably, one could sue the city, the mayor and the city council for not having, as a corporate entity, for not having completed, uh, the audits. An individual, that this was the answer that the Department of Law gave us, I'm not a lawyer nor do I play one on TV, but they, they said that...
Nor does he play one on TV.
An individual could potentially sue the mayor and city council.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, I, I, the, the answer that I wanted to give for the first one was like, what happens if we don't meet the December sixteenth, um, deadline is, uh, stop, or I'll say stop again. Um, there, there, you know, there, there was no, there is nothing hard written into the charter, um, that gives a penalty for failing to abide by the charter. There is an ingrained expectation that the law department, which is very good at stepping in and telling us when what we're about to do, does not meet the requirements of the charter. There is the expectation that the law department is, at any given point, telling the mayor, you have to do this, you have to do that because otherwise you're gonna run afoul of the charter. Given that the mayor is not running for reelection and will not be mayor once the deadline is passed, if the audits aren't completed at that point, it's questionable who would even be held accountable other than the, the, the impersonal entity of the mayor and city council if you wanted to sue the city. Um, the, the issue of why have an outside auditor at all is an extraordinarily good question, um, and, uh, one that as we've seen this in action is an even more relevant question than it was at the time when the amendment, the charter amendment was passing, there was clearly the possibility that there was all this work that needed to be done and it needed to be done so quickly, it made sense that you might need to call upon outside auditors. As we do it though, and as we get these done and as we get a better sense of how much time it takes and how much workload it is, I do think that it raises a very excellent point of, should we be planning for the future to be able to do them in-house since, as a charter requirement, we are going to have to be doing them all the time forever and ever? So we shouldn't treat them as this one-off big project that we have to contract out because we don't have, I mean, we, we don't have, I don't think anyone would argue that we have the in-house resources to do all of this right now in the time allowed. But, that possibility exists for us moving forward and, and we should definitely look at it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be happy to leave the third question to having the committee report on it later.
Okay.
Uh, speaking to, how do you trust city agencies? Um, I'm happy to leave that one for a later...
Okay, let me just mention though...
A later report.
Okay, let me just mention, there's no more accountability, um, for an in, for the Department of Audits as opposed to an external auditor. The external auditors are governed by standards, law, rules, there is no less accountability for an external auditor to, uh, deliver these audits and do them properly and give them back. Um, they are licensing, actually, auditors don't have licenses, do they? But, they...
Pardon me, I should get it.
Say again?
I'm a pardon issue.
Yes, I got you. Thanks. Um, so there is no less accountability, I, I understand the broader question, uh, but there is no less accountability, there is no, uh, less thorough examination, et cetera, et cetera, by an external auditor than, um, the Department of Audits, uh, within city government. Uh, Councilman Costello, did you have something? No. Unless there's someone else who wishes to, uh, bring public testimony, um, if there is, you may come now. Yes, sir?
I have no...
Yeah, come up, please.
I have a question.
I need you to come to the podium, please. Thank you.
This is merely a question.
You still have to...
Yep, we're, we're live television, so you have to...
I didn't sign up to test.
That's okay, that's okay, I've made the request that if you're here and you want...
My name is Charles Thomas, I live at ten thirty-three Hanover Street. And, uh, my question is about an independent audit. Um, you know, we, I often hear those two together, audit and independent, but I've never heard it mentioned here tonight. Who holds the accounting department accountable?
The accounting department?
Yeah, the accounting, the, the city accounting office.
Mr. McCarthy, do you guys undergo peer review? That, Charles, there's a, Charles is a constituent, Charles is a friend, uh, Charles, there's a process called peer review, uh, it exists at, um, virtually every level of government, federal, state, city, in which auditors are reviewed on a cycle basis by other auditors, so essentially a...
Oh, so a peer review?
Yes.
But, who hires them?
It's, it's not hired, it's, for example, I'll let Mr. McCarthy give clarification, but...
You gotta come up there.
Like, who's, who signs your paycheck?
Oh, that's different. That's, that's different. That's you, right? He finds a overpay.
Ultimately, the mayor and city council.
Um, the, the peer review process is, um, under Yellow Book and both, and also AICPA standards, Americans who certify public accountants, and we, we abide by both. Um, we, in theory, you're supposed to get someone of, the spirit of law, of the regulations, someone of a similar size would review you, like KPMG or a big eight, big fourth firm would not review us, someone that does similar work. And, that's how we, we, we contract with those, we, we find those that can do it. And recently, um, we could not find a, a firm of air size that could do it for us because not everyone did a single R and nobody did a CAFR, nobody did a retirement system. So we, we went to the ALGA, the, um, Association of Local Government Auditors, and, and they do it for us. They don't charge us anything except for room and travel and it's a barter system, we provide the services to others in the same area.
Great.
So, that's maybe too much detail.
Thank you, thank you. So I want to thank the agencies and the general public, uh, for, uh, being here tonight and also the general public who are watching, uh, on television, and thank you to staff and, uh, of the, uh, General, uh, Twenty-Five, and, uh, also I understand we've been, uh, added by, uh, the staff of the University of Baltimore, and again, we'll thank the University of Baltimore for hosting us this evening. Um, at this time then, we will now, um, close the Baltimore City Council Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee's review of, uh, the audit process. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, good job. Thank you.
I'd like you for promoting this.
Thank you, sir, yeah.
You said that on Twitter at exactly, at our meeting night, five o'clock, it said there were no trappings.
Oh, great.
There was lots of trappings.
There was lots...